It looked like it all went south again.
Yeah.
It's not good for my garden.
No, it's not.
I don't know.
From water. I drove, I'd go up to Minnesota Nets last Thursday to see a guy and I drove the back way and there's a little bit of fire, you know, on the one side of the road. But what's the stuff dying off? The swamp screws or whatever it is?
Yeah. Bark beetle.
Oh, does that look dried out and tender? I mean, if it's a fire going, it's gonna go all the way up to Silver Bay.
Yeah. My neighbor at the lake just discovered ash borner beetle on his ash tree.
Oh.
Uh, so we have lots of ash on our cabin property and that's not pleasant.
That's not good.
Not good.
Nope.
That, it reminds me, I'm old enough to know the elm tree.
Oh, yeah.
When the elm trees all went out, you know, I mean, it's like that kind of a plague, you know?
I've got relatives, I still have some in pretty far.
Smoker up here, I think.
When that whole elm thing was coming out, the city there decided that they were gonna, there were treatments they could, everybody had their treatment. They treated them. To this day, you can drive through, remember how the elm.
Oh, yeah.
They made it clear all the way.
Canopy, yeah.
It's like being back forty, fifty years in time, driving that town, just.
I saw my first army worm today.
Ooh.
Was that the courthouse?
That was gonna be working.
Huh?
That was supposed to be working.
I was at the courthouse.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was on the staff, so they get out of court hearing.
He was out chasing chickens.
Hey, for question, are we still under water conservation?
I don't think so, I think they.
Did they remove it this afternoon? Did you? Okay. I was gonna say if we were, maybe we should announce a board meeting.
Well, it was this, it's.
Yes, correct. About how it would be.
So you're the newbie?
I'm the newbie for this one. My name is Dana.
Dana, how you doing?
Nice to meet you.
So you related to the other ones or no?
I am not.
Oh, okay.
Nope. Uh, Steve Rockola was the best man at my wedding, though, so.
Oh, okay, usually you ask your cashier, right?
Yeah.
Hey, you wanna make a little money, it's easy job.
I, yeah, I'm a stay-at-home homeschool mom, so this is my, my extra money.
You can be good on that.
Yeah.
But as the city's, uh, my people, first one cut my hair, she worked at night, husband was in construction and then she'd work from like six to nine a few nights and picked up some cash.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
A little extra doesn't hurt.
Oh, no.
Write that down.
Uh, did they boot you or what?
Me?
What is Aurora getting on the franchise fee? Don't they tread something, do they get money?
Do we get money?
Yeah. But I mean, does that produce for a specific year?
Right. No, the only, that, uh, peg fee does, but the other, that's not, you know.
It just gives you general fund?
Yes, but the peg fee is just simply asking for me to.
Yeah, it's like that. And then they provide some free hookups when you got three or four doing the same thing, you don't know, free hookups from.
Right. And they're all. Why, did you see she just? Are you in that? No, you're not in that.
Which one?
Uh, Zito. Cause they're contesting.
You're holding your head already, Josh.
Yep.
Or can they contest?
I, I don't know, it was very weird. I gave them a timeline, they didn't make it, then they contested it after, after we already adopted, and I certified it.
Doesn't, don't you just freak out? Well, you were there, but.
I, I.
Yeah, I remember that part, have you heard that?
No, she's, she's being completely. So Luke finished out his hand, said hello. Are you okay? Are we still, yeah. Bob, do you have a copy?
And you just freaked out. No. Yeah, it's in my mailbox.
Okay.
And then that, that just goes, that just goes on the bill, the extra for Aurora?
Peg?
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, the fee, you know, that, they send you quarter.
Not our, yes, but theirs, yes. I've not seen a copy, but that is my understanding, yes.
I need to get on, I need to set your way, we need to prepare any of these things up. Um, okay, so we're gonna, let's see, we gotta amend the budget first, or amend the agenda first, then I think we'll do the op of office, okay? Make sure that, you know, changing my agenda for the, and then I think that's when we gotta, before everything gets chaotic at the end, we gotta take a photo like we've done over the corner over here, okay? We're trying to everybody, then we'll get down to business, is that, good? Yep. All right.
Yeah. Are we live?
Our sound is live, yes.
Be careful, would you?
I did, let the mayor know.
Oh, let the mayor know, that gets, come on.
What, what's going on?
You're live.
Okay.
You're making a job.
Oh, man, yeah. There's industrial park heavy to stop your move, sure. And the water main breaks, you know? Chew up water every day.
Yeah, and that's under control?
Yeah, wait.
Yeah, we're good. Um, you guys had an I triple R B meeting today, right? Do you wanna report on that to the administrative, or not, or yesterday?
Uh, this morning, we had one with the businesses, they came and pitched on AEOA, downtown beautification grants and business retrofit.
So you could bring that up in their agenda setting thing, right?
I think Lindsay can handle that. So she's the deputy clerk and.
What are you doing now?
Deputy clerk. Watching like a padawan role.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
You're killing a lot of.
I like the.
Our computer.
Those, uh, A, E, U, and D.
I was born in the seventies, of course it was.
Steve Beyondich has a really interesting tablet type thing that folds flat.
No.
Everybody knows about this, but you can write your notes.
You can, what do you?
And then even if it translates, so you have a storeable text.
Mm-hmm.
I'm a toy, I'm gonna do this. We had those, those kids. That's your school.
I thought it was.
The static ones.
You delete.
Yeah, the only difference is they had the shape of.
The ones you get, that was important.
Just like you can sit up, I'll just give you that, so. She's speaking her. It's, he'll talk about it.
So, do you, uh, you're the notary, right, on this thing?
Yep.
Yeah.
Actually, I will sign it after, yeah.
Okay.
You can sign it here, really, if you want to tell the vice.
But doesn't someone have to like raise their hand? She has to raise her hand and say, you know, she doesn't swear on a Bible or anything, right, but she has to.
I didn't know anything about the hand, I mean, that might be new.
That's normally.
You should do an oath.
Yeah, an oath.
Raise your right hand.
Oh, yeah.
I think we missed that with Richard. We managed to have Richard do it again.
We probably more formalize this, though. Ah, and let's, where are we on time? Are you doing the library report today?
Yeah, yeah.
The cameras are working today?
They are.
That's.
I plugged everything in correctly, as far as I've been told, so.
Okay, well, I know it's, it's a process, a work in progress, always, yeah.
It is, yes. Technology is a joy.
Yeah. Okay, everybody's got their cell phone silenced? Where did, where did I hear that from? Oh, Josh.
No, it wasn't mine.
Oh, okay.
I had mine silenced, or?
They got it in airplane mode, I think.
People called complaints, so it doesn't matter.
All right, uh, at least my, uh, Google machine here says that it's five o'clock, so I'll call our, uh, regular agenda setting meeting of the Aurora City Council on Tuesday, June third, at the City Town Government Center to order. It's, uh, five o'clock and, uh, let's see, because we're not conducting business, we don't formally take a roll call at this point, uh, we move on then to an agenda setting, uh, business agenda, and, uh, first item is always to get a library report, which I understand Councillor Ensign is prepared to deliver on behalf of Jim Baker.
Yes, and she says all kinds of things happening at the library. Our fortieth anniversary celebration is going well, that's for this existing edition. We decided to extend it to the end of this week, as we were closed a few days last week. Gives patrons more opportunities to see the history and enter for prizes. I did see some, they dug up a lot of old, very interesting photographs of, uh, this library and, and other ones in, in the community. It's kinda interesting, you know, during the history. Summer reading started yesterday. The theme is level up at your library. We have activities planned from now through July nineteen when the program ends. We have comic magician, Rodini, joining us on June eleventh at one o'clock. This is geared toward children, but is entertaining for all ages. We will be participating in the Independence Day celebrations on July third, and stop in the library all day to do make and take crafts, and join us from three to five in the museum to decorate bikes and participate in a parade. And also, they'll be closed on June seventh, Saturday, this month, and open the rest of the month at normal hours.
Okay. Well, thanks for delivering that to report in Jim's absence.
You know, can I ask a question?
You, you probably don't really answer this, but maybe you do. Do you know how, uh, did, did anybody take advantage of the prom closet?
I guess they've had quite a, quite a few.
They do?
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe we can get an update next time.
Okay.
Thanks.
And the library boards up to staff?
Yes.
A full, full staff?
Full staff, no.
Okay, great, good. Uh, let's see, uh, we have some of the eligible, uh, speakers next. Um, I, let's see, all right, Luke, why don't you first update on some city administrator things, and I'm sure Josh has a number of items to comment on, and our city attorney might surprise us and have something to comment on that, that probably has to do with animals, no?
We had, um, an industrial park meeting today, uh, due to Minnesota Power's transformer getting held up a little bit, they cannot turn the power on there full time, there's a temporary power there now, of course. Um, they initially were hoping to turn the building over June first, this week, so they kick it back about three weeks. Some other kind of anticipating more July first, somewhere around there. That's not a big deal, because the road isn't gonna be done until the middle of August anyways, so at that point, we'll do a ribbon cutting and open hogs for the public, because I know the public wants to be there. So, other than that, um, that's moving along rather well. Um, this morning, we had a meeting with some local businesses, Luke, would you like to touch on that?
Sure, yeah, we met with, um, local businesses for, um, the I triple R B and AEOA through I triple R B to come over and kinda talk about some funding sources that they have, which will potentially be, uh, matches for the one-to-one match requirement for the downtown beautification committee that we have, um, coming available here hopefully soon. So, um, we had probably about ten people, um, from local businesses show up, um, which I thought was great. I triple R did bring some handouts as well for people if they didn't or weren't able to make it, so we do have those in-house, but yeah, that was a, that was nice to hear and, and learn about and kinda get that perspective of what our businesses have hopefully planned here shortly to beautify the outside of their buildings, as well as kind of get everything on the inside applicable as well, so.
So in addition to the downtown beautification monies that we have?
Yep.
I triple R might do a one-to-one match?
Well, so our grant requirement's going to be a one-to-one match, so how they get those funding sources, we're, um, not going to have any sort of stipulation as it, you know, they can go through any other grants that they would like, so the I triple R B presents it.
So individual owners of property?
Yep.
Could go to what, the I triple R B, get some money to satisfy their one-to-one match?
Our one-to-one match, yes, yep, so, yep, which, yeah.
Kinda like what we do is, if you can get more grants and leverage it, you can get more work done, and make your nonprofit farther, so if they could use the downtown beautification funds, that's twenty-five thousand dollars, get a retrofit grant for twenty-five thousand dollars, and maybe put their loan money in twenty to twenty-five, they've got seventy-five thousand dollars going into their building, but only putting in twenty or twenty-five, that's a pretty good deal. So, that's what we're trying to do, is to help, give them opportunities, because I think Josh can tell you, Hitting's probably cleaning house on a lot of these grants, um, over there, so we wanna get some of these I triple R B business grants and AEOA grants that we're on the east of the range, so.
Based on my prior association with the agency, they're equal age and eager to get over here to balance it out, right, between the, uh, service just.
And they'll actually, well, the businesses will cooperate from low points, because we have not had any of those grants in a while, so I'm ready, yeah.
Did any of those people express interest in coming to the meetings?
Yes, um, actually, someone showed up to the meeting today, um, and she said, I thought this was your downtown beautification meeting, so, uh, she said.
Next Tuesday, right?
Yes, I told her, next Tuesday, City House, so, uh, but yes, most of them that had shown up today were already, they're already on the email list and received the correspondence that we received as a committee, um, so, yeah, that was good to see. And then I do know of two businesses that have reached out and said they would not be able to make this meeting, but they would love to get the handouts from this meeting, so I'll be sure to bring those to them.
And just for the tape that's being made, any citizens can go to the beautification meeting?
Yes, absolutely, it is, it is public, it is a public meeting, it is, uh, the second Tuesday of the month, nine AM here at City House, so come on out if you have an interest.
Uh, other city administrator news?
Um, I'm just gonna get into the agenda a little bit right now, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I think that, uh, there were some questions, I know, I.
So, travel and training requests, I usually don't touch on these, but there's a couple of asks, um, of the older considered. Jim Genalini's going to walk on, that's a rural water association training, um, it's a, it's a two-day class, one day's specific water licensure, one day's wastewater licensure, it's a nice little class. Um, Deputy Clerk Luke is looking to lead a Minnesota Cities Annual Conference in Duluth, which I know Mr. Mayor, you've been to a few times, and that's a good opportunity for her. Um, and then Kimberly Behrens, uh, this is probably once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for, uh, accounting clerk. National Rural Water is going to sponsor her to go out to Columbus, Ohio, to help create a curriculum for a utility building program nationwide. So they will pay for her flight, they will pay for her meals, they will pay for her parking, everything, it will cost the city Aurora zero cents. She will, all we're asking is that you approve her days as workdays when she's out there, so just be her time, um, and she will be able to work with seven other of her peers, subject matter experts, is what they call them, and she will help craft the utility clerk curriculum for National Rural Water for the United States. So it's a really good opportunity for her, I was able to do that being a utility manager, um, and it was an awesome experience, and she will come back with just as much value as she's giving national, sitting with those, those people there, so I highly recommend that.
Sort of a exchange of ideas and, uh, technologies and things.
Oh, you do it, or we do it this way, that's better, or, you know, and then just, it's a phenomenal experience, it's at Ohio State University, so, um, it's a really good, a couple-day program, so I recommend.
Kudos to you for your association with the Rural Water Association, and, you know, for, I'm sure that, uh, she was in court, so that'll, that, she's able to have that opportunity, that's gonna be great.
So I just wanted to clarify that, because it is out of state, and I just wanna make sure you're aware that's.
Do we, do we have that on the agenda?
It's in the, yep, it's in.
It's in the travel things?
Yep.
I saw on Lindsey's and Jim's.
Yeah, there's not a form, because there's no expenses.
Oh, I see.
So it's in the consent agenda, but because there's no expenses, it's just on the consent agenda, so we'll just be.
Totally, yeah, just the days, um, that's what Lucas had mentioned, just the days would need to be approved, really, so, which would suffice.
So should we take action when we get to that part of the agenda, to just approve the days off?
Uh, I would just say it could be, I mean, approved as a regular travel and training request, knowing that that's what the stipulation is.
Okay, so it's kind of a supplement to the.
Yeah, and we did put in there that it is sponsored utility clerk training, so it's.
On rats.
Is that over this?
No.
Getting into the agenda a little bit, uh, I did send an email to, uh, Zito, talk about their franchise fee discussion, um, their owner, Michael Regus, is gonna help for a few days, so as soon as he's in, uh, Mayor Gregory, myself, Deputy Clerk Luke, and their team will get together and we'll try and nail that, and get that off, deal of business.
So we'll table that again.
Yes, all right. Subdivision and reasonable request, I don't even know if we'll take any action on that, because I believe at the last meeting, we, uh, we directed Deputy Clerk Luke to send him a letter, and we would deny it after seven days, which is right. So this is something that we, we do need to chat about, um, they came into my office, the owners of, of, requesting this, and I think a better lock for them would be up in the industrial park, they're asking for five acres, um, they're wondering how much we would sell them five acres for up there, and it would be a nice little spot for them, there's some abandoned mine shafts that are up there, but their building itself is only about fifty by a hundred and twenty-five, so we could find them a good solid spot for that, and then it's perfect for a laydown area, which is what they want for parking dump trucks and excavators and material, right, like rock and all of that, they're right in the industrial park, they're right off the road, they love the location, so, um, they're just curious, like, well, how much is it gonna cost us? So, Josh, do you wanna talk about, like, maybe ballpark, we'd be looking for survey?
Well, we've already surveyed all of it.
We're gonna create, when we're gonna create like a five-acre parcel in there?
Uh, we're still going through the plating process, so we could platter it at this point.
So there'd be pretty much no cost.
There'd be no cost at that point.
Yeah.
Or we could just do a sub, we could subdivide the property off to, when it be a couple thousand, survey or draw the legal description off and create, create all that down to the station.
So the plat hasn't been approved yet, that's ideal to, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Pressled it out.
And, and we have time, we've started the plating process with the county, um, they provided comments, but there's still, there's still time to do that.
Well, that would be so much better, wouldn't it, in the neighborhood, like?
Are they at the time?
Um, I mean, their shop is getting delivered right now, so if we could move on it, I mean, they're, he would keep the parcel that he has now and just keep it as residential, and that's what we build his house someday, so he won't have to do anything with it.
Right.
His is, and then this one here is, is, we'd have to do it along with the industrial park project then, and that would be platted all by the end of the summer, and we could look at selling, but he wants to know how much we would charge him, so.
Would they be responsible for site preparation, or would that come in later?
They would do all that. What we would do, essentially, the cost to us would be water and sewer stuffs coming up the road, and then there'd have to be a driveway approach that would be built into it too, but we gotta pour concrete and everything there anyways, so.
So would you then come back to us, like, at our next meeting, with a, um, proposed sale price? Is that the way it would be handled, or how?
Essentially, you guys can, if you guys wanna charge market rate, you just wanna tell them we're gonna give it to them for a dollar because we wanna see them in there, you know, it's totally up to what you guys wanna do.
If this is outside the I triple R B's project area, right?
Just north of.
North of.
Everything is self where we're developing, this would be just north.
So we don't have our rich uncle looking over our shoulder, okay?
We own the land. It's outside of the proposed development, but it's attached to it, if that makes sense.
What, what do you think?
That wouldn't be in the, the blacktop road and stuff, would it? It's, as you, it's to the north as you drive in now, right?
You're driving.
Yeah. You would access it off the new blacktop, correct? So we would, we would put in a curb cover.
You'd put a stub in.
We'd stub the utilities in, and these are the decisions we'd wanna make for the next month, so we can do that, and even if this isn't fully flushed out, the cost to add those services.
As an attorney, uh, can we literally give a gift of property there without a public hearing or something? I mean, it is.
It's the city, can, uh, who owns it? The city of Aurora?
City owns it, yeah.
Well, you can, with past practices, we've worked with, uh, Mr. Shearing on his property, and, uh, you're the stewards of the city property, but of course, development is always key. Usually, there's some costs associated with, uh, you know, to get what, five acres, you need an accurate legal description, so you can convey that, there's a cost to that, and to prepare the resolution and the deed, you know, I think in the past, we've done something where they're responsible for the cost and, uh.
Would we need something like a development agreement to assure what they're doing with it, rather than just flipping the property?
Then you're getting more complicated into it, but, you know.
Yeah, just trying, I mean, I, I know he has good intentions of doing it and everything, and is there any way by, or either timing or otherwise, giving him, uh, the property from the dollar?
Or you could say that he developed it, you know, with a right of reversion or something, I mean, it all depends on how much you wanna go into it.
I could bring him in and say, would you have a building on there here? Would you be able to deal with us pretty good agreement if we forego?
And that could be finessed in the deed, right?
Right.
Yeah.
What do we do for sharing, do we remember? Do we give the land? You gotta.
All of it. And we would probably still charge the water access charge, sewer access charge to get in the utilities.
Right, and that would be the same as it would be back here if you were putting.
That's, then we get the tax base.
Yes, okay, yep.
Yeah, that we would've gotten.
Then he'd fence it.
Um, I mean, I could ask him about that, he's gonna fence it, I think he had talked about it.
I was thinking he's gonna be, you know.
Yeah, particularly with the recreational trails, maybe, there's gonna be pedestrian traffic, yeah.
Well, if he wants to, I think if we had fast track, it'd be great, you know?
I'll, I'll set up a meeting with him, bring him in, we'll talk about the one-year agreement and fence, and, um, see what his timeline is. Then I'll have, I'll sort of do, then we'll direct the engineering team to write that plat and you'll figure that all out, since we've already got that work to do already.
You get kind of a schematic of the land you own and how much, and how you can break it up type of thing, so.
We'll also need easements in there for a trail for, snowmobile trail across.
Cross-country trail, there's a cross-country trail, and it might, that might go away, I get it, but just, so there's an easement for that, too?
Well, we're, we're putting the gravel trail back in north of the road, and that's all plotted right away.
Sure, oh, okay, so that's fine.
So you gotta do the dance of creating the legal description, the plat, so that you can include it in the, uh, conveyance documents and stuff, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, it's pretty exciting that he wants to go up there, I think it's a fun one.
Great. Uh, let's see, Josh, I think you were on center stage, you were.
Yeah, yeah, I'm probably gonna consume the rest of the time, so I don't know.
Oh, wow, well, let's, let's go see if, uh, on the rest of the agenda, are there any other questions or issues, uh?
There's solicitation, I've been working with Lindsey on that, we'll probably just table that and fine-tune it, penalty provision, and we'll be ready at the next, maybe.
And you would put in there something, 'cause I can see it, maybe you've got it, well, schools, they wanna sell cards, if girls' coats wanna sell cookies door-to-door, you know, in exclusion?
Yeah, you, school, youth organization.
Is it in there or no? I mean, that's the concern that councilors have, get it to Lindsey and then put it in.
It qualifies as professional entities that are selling, because they know there's that, that wording in there, so there's that caveat to that, it's not really professional.
Get that, get that input and tweak it so that there's an exception.
So Josh, do you wanna get something to Mike, maybe, or do you want?
I can get something to Lindsey.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you can, or something. And then you can, I don't know what other, what other small organizations in town may sell, but just the school and girl scouts coming around, I mean, or like, you know, activities, but that's all I have.
Mainly the city wants to know what's going on in the city.
Right, but I don't think that the schools should come, because they're going to sell these football cards.
No.
You know, come to council meeting and present that, I think they should just have the ability to do that, I mean, same with girl scouts.
Well, I remember when I was in youth hockey, you had to sell candy, and you went door to door.
Yeah, or could the city grant the license or the permit to the organization, like, to the school to cover the, any athletic groups that would go out, or, you know, you know what I mean, to the parent agency?
We could, yeah, yep, we definitely could, yeah. Well, Mike and I can look into it and see what other cities have done, and follow that, but yes, that, they can either get the, yeah, the organization or the school entirely for all the groups, and then the chamber would get it for Miss Aurora and such, and Celebrate Aurora would get it, you know, so, we can just, yeah, we'll, we'll look into that, so.
Okay, thanks.
In the correspondence delivered, something from the MMUA, Minnesota Protective Utilities Association, is that something that some city representative should be going to or not?
Um, we can, we can certainly look at sending someone from public, public groups to that if they would like to go. Last year, we kind of targeted some of them, last year was like a tree trimming conference, we sent Richard to, some of our dollars are going to Richard getting his licenses, because he's already got his, he just got his, the water now, he's going for his, the wastewater soon, so we'll take it.
Other questions from councilors on specific agenda items?
Turn the table over to, to the floor over to.
You good?
I'm good.
Okay.
All right.
All right, Josh, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. First update on the I triple R B, Western Industrial Park, so we are narrowing in on building completion, so not the site, just, just the building itself. We're down to basically punchless things, there's a few minor things remaining, but overall, the building's mostly, mostly complete. It's culking and kind of just that random miscellaneous stuff, the floors done inside of it. They have not completed the site work around it though, there's, there's some concrete poured as far as driveways and whatnot, but there's some, there's some finishing touches outside, they got to wrap up. So we kind of highlighted with, with the Minnesota Power Connection, and they're looking at the end of June, early July completion date. They've started the utilities for the, for the roadway piece, they started down by the church, they're generally across their driveway, and so now they'll work, so we always start on the downstream side of the sanctuary sewer and work, work upstream, and so they'll start working their way kind of out of the industrial park. Their, their completion date is, is sometime mid-August, and I, I think they'll be working right up until then, so. We don't have a tenant, so I'm not super stressed out about that, I mean, as long as we're paved in, in September, I'm, in general, good with it.
I was talking a little bit with the clerk treasurer about the, what utility ongoing expenses do we think, like she said, there was an eighteen thousand dollar bill essentially that came across her for probably the initial hookup and installation, everything, some Minnesota power. Are we going to have like streetlights that are going to be illuminating there, or any way to project what might be, until the building's occupied, what might be kind of maintenance costs?
So on the building itself, there's, I mean, there's exterior building lighting, but I don't recall if there's parking lot lighting, I don't think there is, there's, there's certainly not street lighting. Minnesota Power is unique, and if, if you have anything besides a wooden pole with their, their power on it, they're not going to maintain it, so. There's other power companies where they'll help you maintain, you know, if you have wind out style lighting or something like that, MP doesn't do that, and so to just not create that burden, we didn't include street lighting in the original design. You know, as far as the building, an architect would probably better answer that, but I would mention just kind of the heat, power, some of those basic utilities until someone occupies the space.
Where do we, where do we pay those ongoing maintenance costs until there's a tenant?
So, we've, we've already received one natural gas bill for twenty-one dollars, so we're taking that and we're going to receive them differently, we're going to bring those to the EDA. So one thing that I would suggest we do, or look at doing in October, is when we pass the, the HRA's resolution where they have a percentage of the levy, we would also mirror that percentage of the levy for the EDA, and then those funds could come out of that, and we'd have, actually have a pot of funds for that. I mean, we'll point out that we will keep track of that, we'll have a folder for it, we'll have a spreadsheet for it, because when there's a tenant in there, that is all directly reimbursable, so, just using EasyMap, let's say we've got ten thousand dollars in payments for gas, power, insurance, things like that, once the tenant's in there and we receive ten thousand dollars in lease payments, we'll keep that, reimburse ourselves, and then we will start making the payment on the loan after that. So we will have the payments cost now, but we'll get them reimbursed once we have a tenant. So that's what I would recommend in the fall, is looking at the, the EDA having a levy percentage passed. It's a very small amount, but it gets you about ten or fifteen grand to cover those little costs, and then, um, in case you wanted to have advertising or, or whatever, you can take them out of there, and then the EDA would approve those payments. Good questions.
Anything else on the industrial park?
So who's been a facility manager while it's empty, is that the I triple R B's responsibility, or the city's?
We will, we'll, we'll be plowing the snow up there, I mean, we will regardless anyways, you know, I mean, they would take care of their parking lot, obviously, once there's a tenant in there, but we'll take care of the road just like them.
I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm regularly getting inquiries about, have you considered this business, or that business, and everything else to go in? Just, just for our common understanding, isn't the I triple R B basically in charge of fielding potential tenants?
Yep, so there's two, there's different processes, um, a couple of them are, there's a business platform nationally and at the state level where a prospective business puts their, their name and their project, and they name it, they name it something like Project Orange, so you don't know that it's Delta, or you don't know that it's Sirius or somebody, right? They, let's call it Project Orange, and then they'll say, we need X more natural gas, we need X more power, X more land, X more utilities, and, and everybody can look at that, and from the nation, and, you know, Minnesota, and say, we fit that one, and they can apply it. So there's lots of those that we're getting, and we'll, we'll circle that around, Josh will answer that, I'll answer that, or Brian Golden from, in the plan will help answer those, so we're all answering those, the I triple R B submits those, they'll actually fly out two sites to meet with people, and we've been doing that, people come and they tour it, most of the time when they tour it, there's a non-disclosure, so we cannot say who's looking at it, we can't publicly state it, but we've given at least six tours already of the facility. There's local people who have reached out to us, when they do reach out to us, we direct them to the I triple R B, because they're looking at their finances, you know, whether they have forward capital, can they afford the payments, can they, are they fitting the business model, and what is the business model? They want somebody in there that's not warehousing, right? We don't want to store things in there, we want to create jobs, so manufacturing, so like building snow piles, or something that's going to create jobs, and keep people in there, so. So there's multiple different ways, but I guess that's a long way of answering, yes, the I triple R B is spearing all of that, and they are actively doing that.
Yeah, it's just unactively, yeah, I think that, I don't know, are you getting the same kind of feedback from citizens, just kind of wondering, well, is this a field of dreams, stuff, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think people are anxious, but you know what, it's going to take some time to fill it, we answered that earlier, I mean, if there's anything we can do to periodically update on a consistent basis, if it's every month, you know, I don't know if we can say we've had six tours through, or, you know, next month we've had two tours or whatever, just to let people know that there's some interest in, in, but that's the time.
Yeah, I think that gives us some talking points anyway, when they're, they're up.
But is it okay to say stuff like that?
Well, we can say that we're touring, we just can't say who it is.
Right, right.
Yeah, for sure. The other thing I'll say too is, this building won't intentionally sit in, like, we, we could probably fill it with somebody who wants six thousand square feet, right? But if you look at the industrial park, this is your corner mall store, right? This is your Sears, like, this is somebody's anchor.
Anchor tenant.
This is your anchor tenant, so, we want somebody that's at thirty thousand that wants to build to a hundred thousand.
Right.
We have other land up there available for somebody that wants to put a five thousand or six thousand square foot building in, so that's, that's what we're looking for. When, they did this in Hibbing, it sat empty for a couple of years, but they could have filled it multiple times, they waited for the right one, and now that one is expanded and it's over a hundred.
It's well over a hundred now.
Hundred fifty thousand square feet, so, so that's exactly what we're looking for, is that anchor tenant in there, so.
I realize, I got us off, we have about three minutes left of the agenda, so I'm going to be in charge, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, the other big one I, I want to hit on, so the Third, Fourth Avenue Alley project, we had, I call it an open house, kind of a pop-up meeting, we, we could go up and question more. The goal of that meeting was to get residents scheduled to televise their private sewer service lateral, so we're lining the main on that project, what we want to do is identify any combined sewer services or faulty ones, specifically under the roadway, because the last thing we want to do is rebuild this road, and then Sam has to come along and dig up the road and fix his service, right? So we want to at least provide that opportunity to do that. I would say it was modestly attended, I, ten, twelve people, give or take, there's, there's fifty houses on the project, so twenty percent turnout, that's, that's usually what we see at these things. We put together a Facebook posting to, to hopefully get some more interest. This is at no charge to the residents, they, they are obviously being potentially assessed with the project, but they don't get, you know, an extra charge or extra assessment if they do this or if they don't. We were very clear, if we found something, we're not going to make them fix it, it's just, we want to provide any repair or replacement within the roadway that we possibly can before we do the project, so. We did get, I think, six out of the, the twelve signed up for, for a sewer inspection. I'm hoping the Facebook post generates some more interest, and we get another six to ten potentially, so. At no point did I think we would get all fifty, I think if we get fifty percent, but that'll be a big one. There were also some residents that reached out that couldn't make the meeting, that's, that are going to do it as well, so. That'll be a big one, I think that posting will go live later this week, so hopefully we can get some interest.
Just to clarify, on the assessments, sorry, you with, that he clerked about it, at some point, the assessment amounts will be fixed or something, to be able to, that information conveyed to the residents, or does that wait until later in the project when costs are totally different?
So that's, good question, that's, that's on the agenda tonight, so, so the next step in the process, so we bid the project out, council's awarded the project to, to North land Constructors, and so there's two resolutions on here, the first one is directing the clerk to prepare this final assessment role, which is in there, and then the next resolution is calling for the hearing based on assessed costs, and so, I can't remember the exact date we proposed, the twenty-third or? And so in that assessment role, the one that we had at the preliminary hearing showed, and I think most residents hit the eight thousand dollar cap, and so we wrote the policy to follow linear footage methods, so if you have, you know, fifty feet, and your neighbor has seventy-five, he's paying his fair share, right, but then, we want to cap it at an affordable limit, as determined by council, and so that was proposed to eight thousand. When we went to lining, that reduced the project cost, and so we actually don't really hit the cap now on, on many of those assessments, I don't, actually, I don't, like, one or two probably, and so talking with the administrator to, one additional way to look at this is, everyone on this project is going to have construction next year with, with the county project. We discussed not assessing them, because we're assessing them for, for this project, and so there's, there's likely a savings on their end, because they're not hitting the cap with, with this project, so.
So we get to agenda item eighteen point eight, the resolution, it's not just to prepare the assessment roles, we've already authorized a hearing?
No, that, that is the following resolution.
I don't think so.
I will, I will review that with the clerk.
So we can, we can put that on the next council meeting and schedule it for the twenty-third, because that'll be two weeks before.
There's got to be two weeks, yeah.
We could do it in motion, couldn't we, rather than the resolution?
Not resolution, we have a resolution prepared for the meeting.
I think you do.
Yeah.
So we could have a motion to set the hearing date, and then have a resolution at the next meeting to actually?
We actually have a special meeting on Monday, I think, so we could put that on.
Put the resolution on then.
Okay.
So Josh, for the property owner, they can get their, their contact, they can get them signed up, get their sewer service televised for nothing?
Yep.
If there's, are any needed repairs in the roadway, that would be repaired at no cost to the homeowner as well?
Correct, correct, it would be in our project.
That one, one woman who tested, you know, come in and, and our first probably hearing on, it was her connection line, right, it was defective, and so will that be her expense then to repair that as part of the project, or does the project benefit her in some way there?
It, it benefits her in the sense that we're going to make the repair with the project, she will not have to do that on her own, nor pay for the pavement separately to make that repair.
Okay. Your connections to?
So then they, they could just slip their, if they wanted to line their service from the house to where you make the repair, basically have a brand new sewer service, where the cost of one slip line.
Yeah.
That'll, that'll be a relief, it was such a relief to have that person advocating for the project, and, and make sure that we solve the problem. I think it's, as still? Five thirty, any urgent other matters that we need to discuss at this point, or we do it in the meeting?
If you have some more updates, we can do that together, because I think Josh has some more, so, so we'll do it during the meeting.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I don't think that's a motion.
Moved by Councilor Klausicich, supported by Councilor S, seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye, opposed, and I will stand adjourned for a couple of minutes. Do you need to reset anything, or are we all set? Camera person, we're okay, switching meetings, all right? Uh, it's five thirty-four, and I'm calling the regular meeting of the Aurora City Council Tuesday, June third, twenty twenty-five, at the City Hall, City Town Government Center to order, it's about five thirty-five, and can we have a roll call, please?
Gregor?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
Hess?
Here.
McClausich?
Here.
All right, could we set for the?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic and liberty, sanctity, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
So, let's see, I'd like to suggest an amendment of the agenda in two respects. First of all, we have scheduled that agenda item eighteen point one, the administration of the OAKF's office to our new city councillor, Ashley Berquist, and I'd like to be able to deal with that at this time, so she can participate as a member in the meeting, and the second amendment would be to bring forth, to allow us discussion under new business, the new item, agenda item twelve, or eighteen point thirteen, is that the clerk, that's correct? Wasn't that the addition?
That's the last item on the agenda.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash four to two, I believe.
So is there a, a motion to amend our agenda in, in both those respects? Moved by Councilor S, supported by Councilor Hanson, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye, opposed? All right, then, to, at this point, I'd ask then that we proceed to agenda item eighteen point one, swearing in of our new councillor, and I'm trying to, okay, we had two versions of the agenda, I'm trying to make sure I'm pulling out the correct one here, so, all right. So, we have the delight of welcoming a new member of the council, we had a special meeting yesterday, where we, the council interviewed three candidates who had expressed an interest in being appointed to the council, and based on those discussions and all the considerations, the council voted to invite, I guess, or appoint Ashley Berquist to be the councillor, replacing Dan Godey, who, as we've talked about at earlier times, died earlier this spring, so. With that, we have an OAKF office, and, let's see, I think you can cover this on the camera, right? Okay. Let's see, and you've got a copy of this, is that correct? All right, so I believe the common procedure.
Oh, stand in front of where you stood, so that we can see both of us. Yeah, so she can see both of us.
There you go, perfect.
Having her back to the camera.
All right, this is a story, all right, so you're going to do it properly, okay, raise your right hand, and, let's see, I'll, I'll read this to you. I, Ashley Berquist?
I, Ashley Berquist.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States?
Solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota?
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully the duties?
And discharge faithfully the duties.
Of the Office of Councillor of the City of Aurora?
Of the Office of the Councillor of the City of Aurora, Minnesota.
Minnesota, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
To the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
Very good. And then you've got to sign this, I think, right?
Yeah.
Or you're happy there, and I think, again, we ought to have a photo by the flag before things get too chaotic, is there any good contractors in the audience?
I'm a phenomenal contractor.
Yes, that's right, I seem to recall that.
I'll go around there.
Say cheese.
Yes, welcome to the council, appreciate your willingness to serve the community, and I think you've raised a lot of, you're the involvement experience to us, so we'll look forward to opportunities to, to defend those, respect us and everything. All right, now, proceeding to the amended agenda that we have, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, item number four, which includes a series of subject area matters on the agenda that are marked with asterisks, and it's common practice to draft those in one single motion unless councillors have any request to have certain items pulled for separate consideration. Any councillors have any items to pull for separate consideration? I don't see any, so then I'd entertain a motion to. So then I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
You will approve it?
Move by councillor Hanson, as amended. And, uh.
I'll support that.
Supported by councillor McClosick. Uh, I'll, I'll try to turn to you. All right, so, uh, we have a motion and it's been supported. Table, any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? So the consent agenda is about to. And, uh, the next item would be any, uh, you know, public appearances. Uh, Deputy Clerk, any, no one's online or, and no one's obviously in the audience here, so we'll move on then to, uh, number eleven, reports from staff members. This might be an occasion to continue with, uh, our city engineers' comments that we had during the agenda setting meeting. Um, so if you want to proceed, Josh?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so rounding out the discussion on the alley project, so we, we had the homeowner meeting. Uh, we had a, I call it a pseudo pre-con before that, just with, to go through the televising and accessing people's homes. We'll have a staff member with, with the contractor so there's no in, single individual going into someone's home. So just trying to provide a very safe, secure, uh, checks and balance, if you will. Uh, we'll have another pre-con here in the next couple of weeks. Uh, they're anticipating starting the, the actual street construction, uh, after the Fourth of July. Uh, so it's the same crew working at White Lakes. They have a deadline of the water carnival to get that project done. When they get through that, they're going to shift over and start this one, so.
Do we have a deadline then to have it done by the time school starts or is that the way they said?
We did, we did. So we wrote it, they have to be done. I think it's the Friday before school starts. Um, the lining we gave them till, I think, November thirtieth, somewhere there. Basically, this, we knew the lining could be done separately and I didn't want to inflate the price by forcing them to line it at the same time as the road. So there's flexibility there. Um, but yeah, we'll be out for the races soon on, on that one. The other project, uh, Community Drive, so we have awarded that contract. The contractors indicated a, a July start date as well on that one. Um, we're working through updating the permit for the county road crossings, so we're going to dig the water and sewer across Casal one hundred. Um, and so that'll require a temporary detour. Uh, we're going to push truck traffic all the way around town. Um, it's Highway one hundred that goes south out of Goabek, we'll push from that one around. So most of the through traffic is going to White Lakes anyways for trucks and so it's not a significant, uh, detour. But we are planning to detour local traffic, so vehicles, uh, down to Holland Drive and up Erie Street and around. And so it'll be a little busier, but it'll be short-lived and it saves us about a quarter million dollars, but not that high. So, uh, but keeping the trucks off, off that street as much as we can. So, uh, with that, I'd like to notify police departments who to help monitor. We don't want truck traffic on our city streets, so just help, help us keep an eye on that. But with that, we can open cut the highway then. We don't have to directionally drill, we don't need to steel casing and, and saves us, saves us quarter million dollars. Ends up being a good thing. We looked at, you know, can we, can we temporarily widen the road? Is there things we can do to stage construction across the road and, and do single lane of traffic? And it's just very challenging with how deep the sewer is through there. The sewer's about fifteen to twenty feet deep. It's sandier soils, so when you go up with your trench, you end up with this massive cut. And so it just, it, it makes it very challenging, so.
So what's the ETA as far as how long it'll be detoured roughly? And whether permitting?
We're going to give them a week.
Okay.
So you got a week to shut the road down, get this across and get it back, back in.
Okay.
So, so yeah, I would anticipate that'll be probably late, late summer. So it's, it's the furthest upstream on the sewer, so they like to start at the bottom, so they'll start at Erie and work their way up. And so that'll be one of the last, last pieces. They could stage it somewhere in between if it needed and so we need to have that competition.
Central and Erie should be sealed cored by then.
Yes.
We do have a contract with the county to come in, seal cored all that, should be nice to tighten and ready.
Good work on the engineering to cut a quarter or a million dollars out of a project is, uh, no small savings. That's great.
Well, we, it was circumstantial, I can't take other credit. So the counties redoing the highway, usually they would make us worried because there, there will be a bump when, when we're done, it's just, um, so we're going to have, you know, twenty feet of sand fill going back in. We'll, we, we'll get very close to a hundred percent compacture, but even one percent on twenty feet is, you know, a couple inches of settlement. It's just, it's just how it works. And so since they're coming back next year, they're going to correct that and.
And that'll give our winters, uh, settling of the trash to it.
So it worked out very well. Um, Casal one hundred update, we, we met with the county two weeks ago. Uh, so we met with their design team to go over just, once again, so we got that additional SRTS funding for, for the third, uh, third street realignment by the school. Those funds have to be spent in twenty twenty six. And so the contract would have to occur concurrently with the county's contract. Uh, it would have to be sponsored by the county and so it just made sense to lump it all in with, with the single county Casal one hundred project and so.
I don't know that we've shared that with the public on camera, you want to talk to the SRTS CEOs to school?
Yeah. Yeah, so, so we applied last winter for a save for us to school, uh, which is a state-funded, uh, grant program. And so we, we, our application was to realign third street going into the, the Sabby East School. Uh, we asked for a million dollars, which is a hundred percent funding for the project. Uh, and we were fortunate enough to receive that, so we received notification in, uh, early May that we got those funds. And they have to be expended, uh, by the end of twenty twenty six. Uh, construction is the only thing eligible, you can't use those on, uh, right away acquisition or, or engineering or anything like that. And so we were, we were very fortunate to get that. We were one of three applicants that got the full million. The other two were the city of Minneapolis and Arden Hills, I think. Otherwise, the smaller cities, most are a couple hundred thousand, so we, we, we did well. And so, uh, we had a strong application and should be proud of that.
Will also include a paved, uh, walking bike path north, um, by the school, all the way down to tie into Long By Hill Street, which runs Pine Grove Park and the Masabi Trail. Just the Masabi Trail and Pine Grove Park will actually not be tied directly to the school, no one will have to walk on Fourth Avenue and make it a lot safer.
Well, congratulations to both administrator and to you for, uh, getting that funding. Uh, but there's a lot of competition for that, right?
It is a very competitive funding program, very. So, you know, hats off to the, the ARDC for their save for us to school plan. They, they coordinated with us at the last minute to get kind of our project ideas in there and so I think that, that helped it score really, really good. Uh, the school board gave us a lot of support, that, that goes a long ways, so hats off to them.
And would it be fair to assume that whoever is the contractor on the Casal one hundred would be in a good position to make a good bid on this?
It's, so that's, that's where I was going, it'll be one contract.
One contract.
It's going to be one. So all of our local street improvements, utilities, the county's, Highway one hundred, the SRTS, it's all going to be one, one contract, one contractor. They, they very well could sub, some of it out, but there's going to be one party responsible for all of it.
It'll be first amendment, right?
Yes, yep.
That's the, the fortune knows, pairing of all these at the same time, it's going to be a, a challenge to the community, right? But at the same time, uh, the savings could be substantial by getting one contractor.
Agreed. I mean, things like two minutes, curving gutter, sidewalk, I mean, these are all large quantity items where we will see a savings. Uh, I think the county said this is their largest cooperative project they've done, including the city of Duluth or maybe excluding, I thought it was including.
Our pro, city of Aurora's infrastructure has now exceeded the county's infrastructure of this project because of the success of all the grants that were received.
We're still sending eighty percent grant funded, we're taking?
Uh, depending on our legislators, if they can come through with some wet funding for the wastewater side, that's what we're waiting on.
Well, for the benefit of the audience that's watching, uh, every dollar they're getting in grants and, uh, assistance for the project is dollars saved for the taxpayers of Aurora, so, uh, everyone's trying their hardest to both accomplish what's needed and do it in a way most economical for the citizens, so.
Couple other updates, Mr. Mayor. So the, uh, stormwater program, so we received a stormwater grant, I think twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, uh, for a planning study. Uh, so that was evaluating the stormwater citywide, uh, looking at, you know, known flooding issues. Uh, and we wrote into that original grant application to develop plans and specifications to fix, uh, a couple of different problems, uh, specifically on, uh, the third, I get this confused, South Third Avenue, Second Avenue intersection. I call it the wishbone.
Morning side division.
Morning side division. Uh, there's another one on Third Avenue West, uh, as you kind of go down the hill and it ends. Um, and then looking at the culvert that crosses under Central Drive, just so I can go apart. Uh, so we televised that, it's, it's collapsing, it, it needs to be rehabbed. Uh, so MPCA had a funding program out this winter for construction dollars, so we got the study dollars, now they have a construction program. So we submitted to do all three of those projects. Uh, it's ten percent match required. Uh, I think we asked for about nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We were notified, uh, mid-May that we got those funds. And so that's, that's a ninety percent funded grant project to fix some, some longstanding drainage issues along town, so. Uh, so the, the design is all grant funded and the construction will be ninety percent grant funded, so, um, really, really good news.
And we'll address some real problematic areas that we wrestled with for years, right? So that's, uh, again, kudos to both of you.
That's good, that's a lot.
That's a lot, though.
Okay. Uh, all right, so that, uh, all the matters you had to address, Josh? All right. Uh, very good. Uh, other staff reports, I don't, uh, let's see, the city attorney, uh? Just was on the agenda there. Oh, okay, I thought I, I thought I heard some discussions of litigation, those are just strategies. Yeah, that was solicitors' sort of thing when we get to that. Oh, okay. Uh, let's see, I believe, uh, other than, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, we, I don't know if we mentioned to the public, uh, first of the month meeting, but Luke, our city administrator, has given notice, uh, of a resignation to be effective, uh, July third and his intention to go into private sector. And we've been, uh, staff and council scrambling behind the scenes to try and envision how to recruit a replacement. Uh, Luke has been a stellar performer, uh, like, it's hard to get one's hands around all the benefits that have come to the city and the city organization, uh, not just a personal nature, but, uh, structural and, uh, personnel. And, uh, I think we all have various ways expressed already to him our deep gratitude for all, all that he's brought to the city here and wishing him, uh, luck in his, uh, new employment. He's not going to disappear from the scene, uh, in the private sector, we may be able to enlist his talents. Uh, but the, the councils started the process now, searching for a, a new city administrator and, uh, how to deal with the interim staffing issues that flow from, uh, providing coverage for such a valuable, uh, team member. So, anything else that, that I miss anything from the council? Uh, it's, uh, uh, we want, we're all old enough to know that these things happen in organizations, as people move on and, uh, we're, we're happy for your opportunities in life and, and deeply appreciative again. I'll leave that. So, uh, any other staff, uh, reports at this time?
We'll just address the ones, uh, as we come up under the agenda items.
Oh, okay, that sounds good. And I think we've dealt with all the other staffs. So then, uh, moving on in the agenda, uh, to agenda item fifteen is the time for reports from councillors. Uh, we'll spare, uh, councillor Berquist to report at this time. Uh, hopefully she'll, uh, bless us with, uh, all sorts of new and exciting impressions and things at the next meeting, so. But councillor McClosick?
Yeah, a couple of things on the HRA. Uh, first of all, they're working to list the old, uh, union home. Uh, there's a couple of items that have to be cleared up with the I triple R B. Once that's done, then hopefully we can list that to see if we can sell, uh, or figure out something with the old union home. And, uh, the grant request program has closed. Uh, we received seven, uh, seven grants from, uh, townspeople who, uh, are looking for a matching grant of up to a thousand dollars to upgrade something on the outside of their house. And, uh, the meeting was yesterday to approve those grants. Uh, I think it went well, but I was in another meeting, so I didn't, didn't hear the outcome. But, uh, cursorily looking at all the grants and, and talking to the zoning person, there didn't seem to be any problems with that. So came up about three short of what we were hoping to get, but, uh, there was tremendous amount of advertising and that's what we got, so that's what we got. Uh, two other quick things, one, I just wanted to publicly thank Russ and the city crew for, um, having the city look great for Memorial Day weekend. Anyone who wasn't fully staffed with his lawn cutters, but the, uh, cemetery as well as all the properties in the city that they maintain were, were, uh, in great shape, so thanks to them. And then also just another quick thanks to the Aurora firefighters and all the first responders for the work that they did on the Jenkins Creek Fire. Uh, it was great, I appreciate it.
Just a question on the HRA grant program, if seven came in, but ten could have come in, do you know whether there's going to be a renewal of the opportunity for?
They were talking about an extension, but I don't know how that turned out. I haven't heard. I wasn't in the meeting, so they, it was either we were going to extend the period for a little bit longer or just close it off and carry the money over till next year. Uh, I don't know how that will turn out.
The program has been uniquely successful in previous years in leveraging a lot of dollars for some good improvements, I think, Hanson. Appreciate that. Concludes your report, that's it. All right, councillor Hanson?
Yeah, well, first I'd like to welcome your new councillor.
Thank you.
And just a couple of reminders, round one is done, but tomorrow and Thursday are rounds two and three of the city cleanup. Just to remind people, you still have time tonight to go out and get your garbage out for tomorrow. And Thursday, I think it's tree limbs and brush and things like that. So details are in the exchange times if you wonder, but. And also another reminder, the rest of this week, uh, at the library, there's still, they've got exhibits and stuff out. It's the fortieth anniversary of that edition in the city hall. And they've got a lot of really interesting, if anyone's a historian, interesting photos of the old libraries and, and people and stuff in town. It's kind of a, and one other thing is every time I drive by the community building, it's looking sharper and sharper and I just would like to tip my hat to the people that were on the planning committee. Their, the results that we're seeing almost daily now are, it's a job well done, the people that were on the committee did a wonderful job of planning it. I can't wait, can't wait to see the final result.
Uh, city administrator for the public, could you kind of explain a little bit about that community center, uh, the funding and the, uh, plans for how it's going to roll out over the course of the year?
Uh, yep, so that was, uh, Representative Liz Lagarde gave us a, uh, appropriation for that community center, uh, a couple of years ago. And once we received that, we put a team together, which was councillor Godey and Public Works Supervisor Deputy Clerk Luke and myself. Uh, the colors, you can thank Deputy Clerk Luke on, she is very fond of that and she, uh, picked those out and was very passionate about those colors. So they, they look nice and she deserves the credit for that, you know, she doesn't want to.
Passionate civil servant, this is great.
Um, so right now, what we're doing is the exterior, we've, obviously the public has noticed there was a lot of rock in there, right? And we had a bid, pre-bid item in there for that. So we replaced a lot of studs, a lot of insulation, um, got it structurally sound first. And now the exterior work is being done, there's some rough work that's going to be done to patch up. Um, a really troubled spot in there on the flat roof that was, that was leaking. All the exterior improvements are on schedule, be completed by, um, July seventh, at which time they'll go into the building and then it will no longer be able to be used for a couple of months. Uh, they're going to redo some of that handicap bathrooms, make them maybe accessible, they're going to, um, do some different doors in there so the storage where the, the tables are at, we can get the tables in and out, we don't have to be looking for one door, there'll be double doors there, very willing to redo the cabinets, they're probably going to paint the entire inside. Sheet rock will be replaced, patched, repaired, all the water damage will be done, there'll be new, I said cabinets or not yet, but there'll be, um, a lot of upgrades, uh, sound system, audio visual, we've got speakers that will go in, um, will be pending speakers, new, um, audio visual equipment for council meetings, so we'll get a microphones in there and set things up a little bit nicer. So there's a lot of interior work to be done. There was six hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that was a remark for that. And the other thing that I will say is, uh, in the next project in twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven with First Avenue, um, the entire parking lot will be rehabbed and done. So you will see the parking lot for the fire hall and for the community center as well as lighting on the exterior for this. So there's a, that's going to look really sharp and it should be decades.
So the parking lot contractor? So the parking lot contractor will also be part of the project team for that whole thing, which should be economical also, right?
Yeah. It's important that cultureizes, we will have to levy for this project, right? Like, we will have to take on some levy funds for this project. That being said, if we're sitting at 70 or 80% grant funds, that's the time we're really maximizing. And we'll talk, we'll delve a little bit down.
Thanks, all right, counsel for the diversion, but I think it builds up, you know, the cabinets that Counselor Hanson was raising. Do you have any other further comments? Thank you. Counselor Hess?
A couple items, East Range Public Safety Board, we're still short one officer, somebody might want to apply for a job, we gotta have trouble with me. Planning and zoning, you guys approved two variances tonight, which were additional storage units. Habitat for Humanity is working on their new house in Holland Addition. I see that's already ready for the concrete now, everything ready today. Only other thing is I want to say thank you to Keith Johnson and the Saaby Basinary. Somebody decided to run over one of our benches at the Colli Barium and smash it, so Keith Johnson come the following day and rebuilt it again. They hit it pretty hard because they put it right up onto the Colli Barium slabs.
Oh, wow, my gosh.
But that's all repaired now, so thanks to Keith for, I found out about it Tuesday morning, I went to see him right away and wanted to be fixed.
It's wonderful they have such publicly motivated, local skilled contractors, and good work for the cemetery board, too.
Is there any update on the funding for the EMTs at the state level? Is there any update on funding levels for the EMTs as far as, you know, they're running a deficit, obviously, all the urgent, have you heard anything?
I think our legislative lobbyist's reports, I don't think he's given any encouragement that there are any funds on that area. That's it? Thank you, Counselor Hess.
Here, I had one more update, I forgot.
Counselor McClosy?
All right, thank you. So, people stopped me on several occasions, on the southeast end of St. James' Pit, a year ago, the council approved the University of Minnesota coming in and doing a sulfate study project. So they've started that, there's 249 trees were planted, are going to be planted by the end of the week, they're little sapling aspens. They're going to measure the sulfate in the water that they're pulling out of our pit, and they're going to take the leaves out of the trees at some point, see how much sulfate is in the leaves to see if these new hybrid aspen can suck up any of the sulfates. So as people walk around the pit, they'll see a fence up there now and traffic coming in and out.
So that's a pilot program that might go all across the whole range?
Yeah, it's a three to five year study, so it would depend on the outcome of that study and if the funding continues.
Well, the sulfate issue doesn't go away, so it's good if there's a.
There is some interest in the community about that, I've heard a lot of rumors going on over there, so that's what's going on.
When it's done, we will own 249 aspen as well, so.
All right, Counselor Hess, you concluded your remarks, all right. Turning next to the mayor's comments here, we had acted at last meeting to authorize me to become a nominee for the Rams Board position that was open because of Counselor Doty's timely death. We're working on a lot of cooperative East Range efforts, and after talking with the Rams Director and Steve Bianich, the mayor of Oab, it appeared that Steve would be more likely to be elected and therefore be able to represent the East Range on the body, given the past associations he's had with that actual operations of Rams. I have not had that. And so, I went there in support of him and he was elected to be on the board, and so we do have representation on the board for the East Range. And I sort of apologized a little bit for acting unilaterally and not aggressively, pursuing my own candidacy, but I think we'll be kept well informed and the interests of the East Range will be adequately expressed by Mayor Bianich. So, just to kind of update everybody on that. We had a very interesting economic summit yesterday, it was sponsored by Northspan, which I think over time, maybe we'll be able to digest a little bit, but what was impressive to me out of that was the speaker from Deed, Department of Employment and Economic Development, was beginning to make us aware of all the data that is available for things related to our housing projects, our businesses, in terms of data mining. We've heard that term, and they're using it effectively for community planning and showing, for instance, how many residents go out of the city each day to go to different places of work, and how many come into the city from other places of work, and how that relates then to housing concerns, issues, and business development. I think that at some point, we're going to, we should invite that same speaker back to talk specifically about Aurora, and it just gave me insight into a whole new dimension, I guess, of resources we could pull upon for helping with our community development. So I'm just commenting on that and putting on Ray or screen, and we can get more details for any of your interests, one or another. The East Range Community Power's Board, we had acted, I think, as a council to direct them to start considering kind of a forum on joint East Range actions. The last thing, that was brought up, the East Range Power's Board, there was probably too much preliminary discussion about it with limited information, but Northspan was charged with making plans for that event, so we can, in particular, I think it came up in the context of fire protection with the problems in Hoyt Lakes, that are in the town of White with their fire protection there, and then also the pending legislation about fire districts, you know, trying to see how the area might capitalize on that. And just to echo the comments today the council has made, certainly kudos to our firefighters, both formerly retired and active, who helped do such a great job on suppressing that. On the water project, Hoyt Lakes has acted to finally, as a council, commit to joining the project and to applying for an interim loan from the Rural Water Association to finance their planning costs, planning and design costs, and to set the stage essentially for how they'll approach their funding for joining in that membership. But that's a huge boost to all of us here, because ultimately, when they come on, then the common costs will be spread over a much broader customer base. Now, that having been said, they probably won't actually be receiving the water until about 2029, but I know that the water infrastructure to facilitate that is going to be somehow involved, I believe, city administrator in our CASA 100 project, right, or associated with that?
Yep, so a significant portion of the water main through Aurora that will eventually be released will end up on the south side of the tracks by 2027. Where that lands is to be determined based on grant funding, and there'll be another phase to take it from there to get it to Hoyt Lakes.
So, that's very encouraging for the whole of the East Range after those decades of planning, it seems, of that project. Other elements, the water intake site on the north side of the Bears Pit Lake is, I think the intake line's gone out and they're beginning to make preparations for the superstructure or the structure on top of the case on there that's associated with that water intake site. And the treatment plant, as people who are driving by know, the walls and the treatment tanks and everything are going up in that project. Both that aspect of the project and the whole project's on time, on budget, and should be enabling a new water source to go online for us and the town of White at least, in the first part of next year, in the spring. At the, let's see, East Range Power's Board, too, Adam Cochran, the local, let's see, forestry service head of that, gave an account to the board meeting on the fire suppression efforts and things. And one of the takeaways I had, they come out of this hindsight is always 20/20, but they have a Fire Wise website, it's called. And at that site, there are sort of the collective wisdom of how to best manage your property and your buildings to minimize wildfire damage or to avoid it. And it sounds like, again, one of the takeaways from the experience, the bullet we dodged here by not actually getting that. So, that's going on now, let's see, the only other thing that came up that I thought was interesting, the Bears River basin, essentially, the work is, they're doing considerable work on channel stabilization there, tremendous floodwater flooding. Unfortunately, we don't get into that watershed, but it was very interesting. And then just commendation to the community for turning out on the Memorial Day observation. It was certainly important to pay tribute, and there was a really good turnout and do tribute to those veterans who served the country. So, let's see, I believe that's all I have to report, to get back to the agenda. Moving on to Agenda Item 17, old business, 17.1 is a proposed resolution 2025-24 relating to updating the cable franchise fee with the provider Zito. And city administrator, the status of that?
We are waiting for the owner of Zito to get back in the office to meet with us, so we ask to table that until that meeting is held.
Is there a motion to table?
Make a motion to table Resolution 2025-24.
Moved by Counselor Hess, supported. Supported by Counselor Hanson. Any further discussion on that? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, that matter's tabled. The next one is a subdivision and resuming request as described in there, is that a resolution?
Oh, it's a.
No, it's a motion.
So, no, this, there's, this was actually voted on at the last meeting, we gave the deputy clerk seven days to wait and then send over a denial if they did not come in. They came in. So what I would say is, we would deny this one, and I would look at two separate actions on this, one would be to deny this, the second one then would be to authorize engineering city staff to work towards a five acre parcel in the industrial park with orders opposed to this, if that makes sense? That makes two separate actions.
I'll make a motion to deny 17.2 regarding the subdivision resuming request.
Is there a support? Counselor Burquist?
I believe I have to abstain.
Okay, I'm sorry, all right. That's.
You bet, trade move right up your back.
Specifically for towards our.
Sure, yeah. I'll support, I'll support. Sure will be a rare occasion. So Hanson supports, any further discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, all right, that matter is tabled. And then moving on to the second aspect, with the city administrator and engineer, we have a motion to authorize the staff and engineer to prepare a proposal for the convenience of a five acre parcel of land within the, or just north of the industrial park area for possible relocation of this business or location of.
I think so.
Moved by Counselor Hess, supported by Counselor Hanson. All right, any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, all right. We've adequately dealt with 17.2. Moving on to 17.3 is Resolution 2025-23, proposed ordinance number 116, relating to solicitors. It's my understanding some work's been done on that, but there's still some more work to be done, and the recommendation of the city attorney is to table it?
Table it, yes, we had discussions about exempting certain entities, nonprofits, schools, et cetera, we'll get input from that. And then penalty provision, had like the Minnesota State statute, we might just refer to our own ordinance penalty provision. So, I'll work with Debbie Clerk Luke, fashion something and get it out before the next meeting, hopefully, get more input, and if it looks good, then we'll act on it the next meeting, not the meeting after.
Very good, thank you, counselor. Is there a motion to table that?
I'm making a motion to table Resolution 2025-32.
I'll support that.
Moved by Counselor Hess, supported by Counselor McClosy, should include the discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Takes care of our old business, moving on to Agenda Category 18, new business. We've already accomplished Agenda Item 18.1. 18.2 is to the approval of liquor licenses for 2025-26. I don't think there are any surprises or new ones in there, are there, Deputy Clerk?
No, they're all the same from last year, so.
And the city attorney, can we approve these?
Yeah, you do a white blanket or en masse, as long as they, current with their, usually real estate taxes and background checks, we normally have in the tax.
All right, so both are, all the off sale, on sale, semi license, club license, wine license, all those could be in one motion. Is there a motion to?
Approve motion.
Moved by Counselor Hess to approve those.
Liquor licenses.
Supported by Counselor Burquist. All right, any further discussion on any of those applicants or licenses? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, all right, the licenses are approved for another year. Agenda Item 18.3 is proposed Resolution 2025-34, assigning an address for a property in.
Holland Drive Addition?
It's a habitat house.
Oh, the habitat house, and so that did not have an address previously, and so as part of our public duties, we act to assignment address. So, the address is specified in the proposed resolution. Is there a motion to adopt the proposed resolution?
I'm moving to adopt Resolution 2025-34.
Moved by Counselor Hanson, supported by.
Possible.
Supported by Counselor Hess, and he, gotta move fast, Counselor Burquist. All right, so, okay, further discussion on that? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Now an address for the habitat house, what was it, you had mentioned, right, Counselor Hess, that they made some progress on.
To be ready instead of performing by the looks of when I stopped there before the meeting, so. Figured it'd probably form after.
Yeah, that's real progress. It's been a few years since we've had a habitat house, I think, right? So that's good. Moving on the agenda, 18.4, proposed Resolution 2025-35, regards the purchase of property for water main access associated with the new water project. We had, I think, a diagram of the parcel, we're a picture at one of our previous meetings, and I'll vote for the public, they might be monitoring, although it goes through a beautiful stand of white pines, I think we, in fact, would be to pour under it rather than removing the trees if possible.
I mean, we're going to have a boring, I guess it's something we could.
Be good, we'll take a look and see if there's a clear path through it, if not, we'll be able to drill it. All right, so, in any event, the proposed purchase price is $10,000, is there a motion to?
Where is that? I didn't get that.
Funny story on this is, Josh and I were talking about how we're going to leave this waterline into there, and we said this parcel would be perfect for this project. And two days later, a realtor called me and said, this parcel is up for sale, the city has purchased up here, would you guys be interested in this? We said, yes, we would be. So, two days later, after we said we'd leave that parcel, they called us without anybody reaching out to them, so.
So did it. And the purchase price is basically.
It's the same.
Similar to an earlier one that we did, but kind of escalated through inflation. Remind me, do we have a motion on the table or not to approve that proposed resolution?
Make a motion.
Moved by Counselor Hess, supported by.
I support.
Counselor Burquist. Any further discussions on that motion? If not, all those in favor. If not, all those in favor say aye. 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 opposed. We have a waiting on that project. And agenda item eighteen point five, proposal of services, safe route to school design. We touched on this earlier in the engineers' report, but for the public benefit, just maybe to clarify what the grant is, and I guess we've had an explanation, right, of applying for the safe school thing on the record, but this particular grant, we're accepting the grant, is that correct?
No. No, correct.
So this is the design engineering proposal. You've authorized all the, the rest of the project. Well, this is a substantial add, and so there's an additional topographic survey and design engineering that they do to get this included in the project. Also included in this is, so we're, so we can get some more soil testing in that area. I wanna do a phase one on that area as well, just knowing it's the old railroad corridor, there's probably some stuff we're gonna find. And then preparing the easement we need for the Bradish property. So with, with the realignment, we're gonna have to work with Bradish, and that's, that's in process to, to get a permanent easement or acquire a subdivided property. I'd recommend permanent easement, it's just quicker and easier. And so that's all included in here as well, to get that taken care of.
And then just maybe not an immediate issue, but there also would be an associated alteration in the use of the railroad avenue, right?
Yeah, yes, and so there's, there's a vacation of potentially at the north half of the railroad avenue as part of that as well. That would all be included in this, too, to go through that process.
Has there been, I can't totally forget my prior life, has there been some, looking at the title in the area there? I know on that old shed area, there was some real title questions at one point. Does the ownership seem clear of the areas of which we're going to be working?
We, we pull all the titles. I don't know specifically what is out there for issues, but that is, that is part of the process. We're gonna have to get an easement from NP as well, because they have that power stuff there. The other thing, it, it was replatted in the nineties, I haven't fully flushed that out, but they like, the railroad must have vacated their whole corridor at some point, and, and the city replatted a lot of that. And so I don't have the backstory, I have to ask others.
Well, I'm, I'm sure between your resources and the city attorney, if we're gonna plan, it's certainly going to be an enormous benefit to that entire school, countless traffic area.
Yep, but this is an all in proposal to move it forward, there's, there's a lot of kind of unknowns or things we have to flush out, but I don't intend on coming back to control those. We had to do this, it's, we flushed out kind of what we need to do pretty well, and so that's all, all included here.
One thing I'll say, too, is typically with a project, there's the design in the beginning, and you would approve that, and then we would bid it out. We will do the bidding with the Casal one hundred project. And then there's the follow up, which is the construction management. This would fall under the Casal one hundred construction management blanket, so we won't have another proposal for this, it will just be as part of the, the major project that we're doing next year.
So do you think, Josh, that there's gonna be significant issues with the railroad grade as far as brownfield there, and would the million dollars cover it, or would we have to go after other funding to cover that?
It's, it's hard to say without the phase one, what we're gonna find. My approach to it is gonna be to minimize disturbance as much as possible. We do have some water main through there. I know some of it has been replaced up to the intersections, so we'll have to look at how much digging do we need to do, but the goal is to dig as little as possible, because knowing same corridor in the industrial park, we found issues. This is even closer to the, the former steam plant, I'm sure it's not any cleaner. I don't know what's remediated with the school. I know they, was it twenty fifteen that they started reconstructing Third Street from Fourth Avenue? I don't know how much outhead was remediated then, so good questions, things we'll want to flush out. But I would not be surprised if we find some level of contamination.
Right. But with that million dollars, there's something kind of built in for that, or not really?
I, that's a good question. I don't have to ask if contaminated material is an eligible expense. I would think it is, I'd be surprised if it's not. There's other funding programs out there through the state to pursue as well. If it's a small quantity, typically it's not worth pursuing those, but if it's, if it's big enough, it's certainly one.
Yeah, those brownfield grants, right, that we...
That's, that's an avenue, yep. That's more site development programs, but, but yeah, so certainly, there's, there's funds out there to run down to help.
For the most part, this has all been disturbed already. We've already, other than the, the shed, the steel shed that's there, where we're gonna add a road through that, but, I mean, all, all of it's got road base that's been dug up. As you said, there's water main that's already in there, and so I would anticipate most of it already has been dug in the road, you know, other than that little kind of corner. Even if there was, I wouldn't expect the cost to be significant.
Further questions from the councillors? No doubt, could there be a motion then to approve the proposed preliminary and vital design engineering services for the Third Street realignment?
And we accept the proposed services for that project.
Moved by councillor Hanson to accept the proposal.
I'll support that.
Supported by councillor Clausage. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. 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 opposed. That project moving forward. Moving on to agenda item eighteen point six, proposal services, housing grant application up here, and, let's see, that's to the Greater Minnesota Housing Infrastructure Grant Fund Program, right?
Can you say that three times fast?
Yeah. So, city administrator, do you want to explain that just a little bit?
Yep, so we have spent some good grant money on getting the community housing project up and running. Just for a reminder, there's thirty five some lots in there. We received three hundred thousand dollars from CDVG to install water and sewer lines into eleven of those lots this summer, and that's been awarded. So on the north side of this project, by the end of twenty twenty five, we will have eleven lots of water and sewer stuff in there, we'll have them platted, ready to go. The only problem is we can't access them with the road yet. So what this does is this takes care of that. We'd be looking at getting a, a housing grant for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's a one to one match. We feel that we check a lot of the boxes to, to obtain that quarter million dollar grant. We would then pair up, we'd go after a CDVG grant as well for our one to one match to try and knock that out as much as we could. But once this road is in, we would have eleven lots that are ready to be developed and built on, and that's the last piece of the puzzle. This road design is for a home area addition or development, much like Holland Edition, where you've got ditches and culverts and kind of a more of a reward type feel to it. We could certainly add sidewalk later if we had to, or add some other things in there. That's kind of what you're looking at, so go ahead.
Would the driveway aprons be put in then with the road, or would it...
We wouldn't. And so, so the goal here is to minimize construction costs on the road, so that's when you, when you go to what we call a rural section, so you have ditches instead of curb and gutter, you don't need storm sewer, you don't need curb and gutter, and so your, your cost to build your roadway goes down about forty percent less. The other advantage is, is we're not putting the driveways in the homeowner, we have to put the driveway, and, and the culvert in for that matter, too, and so it's putting the costs on the developer, but at least we're gonna have the roadway in, we can start generating that, that interest.
Nice thing is it gives the homeowner flexibility for the layout of their land. So where do you wanna put it up? Do you own your house on this side, that side, do you wanna save some trees, do some things? So it gives them flexibility around it, and not saying, this is where it's going right now, so.
And that's envisioned to be single family housing development, right, at this point?
That's, that's how it's proposed. We're, we submitted the preliminary plat to the county. I mean, there is still time to pivot on that, but the, the, I think, quarter acre lot.
The other thing I'll say, I think this fees five thousand dollars for this. So if you approve this, the next one, and we can talk about both of them, the Lake of Minnesota Cities has a grant application, grant navigator. There'd be a resolution there that I would ask that you approve for me to apply for that, so we can write a grant to get a grant. So I would try and get five thousand dollars offset the cost of this. It's not guaranteed, but we were very, very successful at getting one last time. You're eligible every two years, and the last time we did it was twenty twenty three. So with that resolution, I would submit that with an application, trying to get five thousand dollars to pay for this, so.
And then the Gilbert Bank, agenda item eighteen eleven, that's funds that are intended for that same project, right?
Correct, that would, those funds would be used with the utility installed this summer.
Very ingenious, all the different pots of money that you're pursuing on that, that's for sure. So, all right, so we're on eighteen point six, proposal of services for the housing grant application is contained there in our agenda packet. Is there a motion to approve that, those services for that grant application?
I'll make the motion to approve the housing grant application.
Motion by councillor Clausage, supported by councillor Hanson. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. A motion approved. Moving on to agenda item eighteen point seven, proposed resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty six, is the actual application to the, the city administrator just described, Lake of Minnesota Cities Grant Application Program. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty six.
All right, says there's support for councillor Hess's motion. Support is for by councillor Hanson. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. 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 A opposed. That resolution's approved. Moving on to agenda item eighteen point eight, proposed resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty seven, relating to alley project assessments, the, let's see, this is ordering preparation and proposed assessment amounts for that alleyway project, and the, the materials on the proposed resolution indicate that there'd be a levy of approximately three hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars on the properties affected by this, or a assessment, I should say levy, right? Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the proposed resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty seven?
I'll make a motion.
Moved by councillor Hess, support.
I'll support.
Supported by councillor Hanson. And we had a discussion in our agenda planning that there will then be a, an associated what, motion with this one, are we going to do it at the next meeting?
No, no, I, I thought I said the clerk of both resolutions, I did not. So there is a subsequent resolution that'll be in the next council meeting that calls for the public hearing.
Okay, the public hearing is scheduled for when?
Well, not officially scheduled, so it's not, but it's intended to be, I think it's June twenty third of the meeting.
All right, so, and if we consider that on our special, the next Tuesday, that should be timely, or...
That should allow us to meet the statute for notification and the public hearing. And then the public hearing is the time for the affected residents to come voice their concerns and, and address the council on the matter.
Then you, you'll have the numbers for the...
Yes, we'll present the official assessment role. There'll be a short presentation, similar to last time, but even more truncated, to just run through the project, how it's funded, what the official cost is. I would leave it at your guys' discretion if you wanna take action there to adopt the role. Some councils do, some councils wait till the next meeting and adopt it there, so we're narrowing in on the, the end of the process.
All right. Remind me, Debbie Clerk, do we have a motion or not, or do we adopt that, or that?
Yes.
Kind of support?
Yes, it was moved by Richard and supported by Doc.
All right, so on the proposed resolution, then, all those in favor say aye. 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 Whoops, I'm sorry, councillor Burke?
So number two says that there's an interest rate of a percent of, at two percent per annual from the date of the adoption of the assessment resolution. So as soon as we adopt this resolution right here, this is going to start gaining interest?
No, and actually, what I would recommend, what I would recommend is to table this, and do this at the same time with the other one. Because we're gonna want to reach out to find out what the treasury rate is currently for that. So, and I don't know, can we pull that back and, and do that if you, if you find that friendly? Because we should do both at the same time, get the current treasury rate, put that on there, and since we have to do another one, let's do that.
Well, see, you're already contributing greatly to the discussion.
But no.
To answer your question, so that it doesn't start acquiring interest until the role is adopted by the council. So not with this resolution, it's with, not the subsequent one, but the one after that, where the role is officially adopted by the council. And there's language in here, is if they pay it by a certain date before it gets filed with the county, then there's no, there's no interest. But if it does get filed with the county and put on their tax roll, then the interest will start accruing from the date of adoption.
But they get fifteen years to...
They get fifteen years.
For timing, is just so everybody knows, is the, when the role is adopted, that's like towards the end of the project, is that correct, or no?
No, it'll, it can be, well, after you accept it, it can be at any time, so.
The other thing with our assessment policy, if you're sixty five or older, you can only make interest, you have the option to only make interest payments if it's hardship, so. And then once the house is sold, then those assessments can go on to the same house.
And we, we have a city assessment policy, I'd be happy to sit down and we can go through and just kind of show you the ins and outs of it, and how this stuff is determined.
Yeah, and that assessment policy, I was talking to Luke a little bit beforehand, I know we passed the gas surcharge or project fee, we talked about lowering that potentially from eight thousand to six thousand per, per household, so I don't know if we're gonna start that this one around, this, this go around, or, you know, the next one that we do, I mean, when does that trigger it?
So we would have to talk to our financial advisor on that one. We would probably have to change the assessment policy to reflect that as well. Right now, it's not, we did not change the assessment policy for it.
The cap is out in council's discretion.
Yeah.
Good point, though, that, yeah, we might be able to lower it down to six thousand, depending on what the financial advisor...
From what it sounds like, some of those fees are now being billed. So we'd have to take a look, see, and, and see how much you can get in and how much we can apply to it then.
Yeah, the gas fees definitely, I didn't look at the electric one.
Okay.
All right, I believe procedurally, we had a motion on the table with support, and we were proceeding to the vote on it, and then we got into this discussion, so I believe the movement and the, pardon, the second one, that was what councillor Hess had counseled?
Withdraw.
Withdraw their, with this motion?
So who made the support?
They did. I'll withdraw my support.
You made the motion.
And you'll, councillor Hess, withdraw that motion, and then I'll entertain a motion to table this matter to the next meeting.
I'll make it.
Moved by councillor Hess, supported by...
He, for House Burke.
Councillor Burke. And any further discussion now, that if not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. A opposed, all right, that's tabled. Moving to agenda item eighteen point nine, proposed resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty eight, the Orange Resource Rehabilitation Public Works Grant Application. And we had some discussion, I think, of this in our agenda setting, but city administrator, do you wanna kind of explain that a little?
Yep, so this is, this is our very large project, we started out as just First Avenue, and that's where we received our local road approval project grant for one and a half million. And again, this is all from Fourth Street, it's been north Fourth Street West. So that original one, two, three, four, five block area has now grown to be fifteen blocks, which covers all Fourth Street from First to Fourth, covers four of them. I do have a map here, have you seen that map or not? You have seen the map, I just don't have it.
Yeah, I was asking the deputy clerk about what were the fifteen blocks that we...
That's what it would be, yep, it's all, it's two blocks of Second Avenue, four blocks of Fourth Street, there's about seven or eight blocks of First Avenue, there's the block going south on Second Street East. There's also a potential section that we'd be drilling for water main, south of the tracks as well, if there's enough funding for it. But essentially what this is, is this is Aurora's monster street project here, where we're gonna get a lot of streets done in the next two years. And we would be applying for a five hundred thousand dollar ITRB public works grant towards this this year. And then next year, we would also be applying for a five hundred thousand dollar public works grant to go towards this, so we'd be looking at ITRB contributing a million dollars grants to go on what we've already received, so.
Right, further questions before we get a motion on the table?
All right, further discussion before we get a motion on the table? All right, if not, is there a motion to approve the proposed resolution?
I'll make that motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-five dash thirty-eight.
Moved by Councilor McClosy, support.
I'll support it.
Supported by Councilor Hanson, and anticipating no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve. The motion passes. Moving on to agenda item eighteen point one zero, proposed resolution two thousand twenty-five dash thirty-nine. Involves a Minnesota housing grant application. And, let's see, I think, Deputy Clerk, you made a few changes of this dramatically, right, based on our discussion, or?
Um, I don't believe so.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll, I'll just. Anyway, we have before us the proposed resolution two thousand twenty-five dash nineteen, which authorizes the application to the Minnesota Housing Facilities Authority, Greater Minnesota Housing Public Infrastructure Grant Program. And we're requesting a grant in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand, is that correct? Is there a motion to approve the proposed resolution?
Yeah, we approve the resolution two thousand twenty-five thirty-nine.
All right, and support.
I'll support.
Supported by Councilor Henson, uh, yeah, the only thing I had noted was there was.
Yes, I got it. The attorney just brought it to me, yes.
Okay, sorry, changed that. So as, as reworked a little bit, the city staff, I assume that's part of the motion for approval here. So, any other further discussion on that proposed resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve. Motion carries. Moving on to agenda item eighteen point one one, proposed resolution two thousand twenty-five dash forty. This is to accept a generous grant from the Gilbert State Bank for funds for the community drive housing project, right? The proposed grant of fifty thousand dollars, which came by, for goodness sake. Luke was driving around and I was driving around, and we talked to the bank president, and we got the application in by a four block deadline, and we have fifty thousand more. So, kudos to Gilbert State Bank for being willing to support a community project like this. Councilor Henson?
I'll make the res, motion to adopt resolution two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-five dash forty, and a big thank you to Matt Uong from Gilbert State Bank.
Yeah, he specifically took personal charge of it, so.
All the other names would step up, right? Moved by Councilor Henson, supported by?
I'll support that.
The Councilor McClosage. Any further discussion?
Oh, I'd like to also thank Matt for that, that's really a nice gesture.
Yeah.
Just a question, does that, that, does that grant go toward the roads?
Uh, no, this goes to the utility project installed, yeah. So we'll, we'll do a photo and a recognition date with him this month, because we have to receive those funds by the end of the month. And then we'll expend them later this summer. If you guys wanted to do a, a letter, we could certainly type out a letter, have you all sign it, send it to them, that might look nice.
Which, yeah, we may get a photo op too of one of those large checks, you know, I have a feeling the bank would like to publicize that to their, their customers.
What?
Matt, I'll probably bring his own check. Yeah, well, that may be too, yeah.
So when do you anticipate that ceremony will be, June, July?
Oh, I, I, no, we need to do, we need to accept it in June, so I, I've reached out to him, we'll possibly do it the twelfth, and we'll see what he says. I'll let you all know.
So we'll prepare a letter and make it pass around for everybody to sign?
We can do that by motion, just so it's the direction of the council.
Oh.
All right, is there a motion?
We send that one.
Do you want to finish the first one?
Yeah.
We have accepted first.
All right, so we have that motion, except being, we haven't voted on that yet, have we? You never stated, all right, if not, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve. All right, now, in a motion to authorize or encourage sending of a letter of thank you, signed by the counselors.
I'll make that.
Moved by Councilor Henson, supported by?
I'll support it.
Councilor McClosage. And anticipating no discussion on that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve. All right, so we will duly thank the bank for that generous contribution. And as Councilor Henson said, maybe it will inspire other potential donors for the financial community, so.
Especially when he doesn't, he doesn't have a bank.
Yes, yeah. Body has a lot of. All right, moving on to agenda item eighteen point one two, proposed resolution two thousand twenty-five dash forty-one. Federal grant policy, I think we adopted a similar way in connection with the water project some time ago, and we got those federal funds.
I just, uh, this was a, a catch by our auditors, so this is a requirement, uh, we want, so this is their policy. They sent it to us and said this would cover everything that we needed. We'll put city borough on it, and this, this will take care of that check month, or, because we do receive federal grants. So we need to have this as part of our audit testing.
All right, motion to approve the proposed resolution?
I'll make that motion to approve two thousand twenty-five dash forty-one federal grant policy.
Moved by Councilor McClosy, support. Supported by Councilor Berquist. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve. Motion carries. Moving on to agenda item, let's see, eighteen point one three, which we added to the agenda earlier in the meeting. That's proposed resolution two thousand twenty-five dash forty-two regarding a capital budget request to the East Range Water Board.
So as part of the fiscal agent's responsibilities, we were hoping that the legislature would have already approved the WIP grant increase for the water project. We're hoping it would, or approve our bonding request from last year, so we were hoping that I'd have to do this again. But since it has not been done, the, the deadline is June thirteenth, so we'd like to approve this so we can put in an application. The final, you can tweak it a little bit, so if we do get some funding, we can pivot and move it somewhere else by October. But right now, we need to have a resolution and submit it by June fifteenth, since we do not qualify for anything as a state.
Placeholder, and we've been testifying now with the legislature and encouraging our legislators to deal with those with grants. But if I have personal knowledge of this, I'll move approval of the proposed resolution, is there support?
I'll support it.
Supported by Councilor Hanson. If ever going to clear that we're just asking for more money, all right, any, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve. Proposed resolution's adopted. Administrator, Deputy Clerk, any further business to lead up?
I do have two others I'd like to set, which are one is a project meeting and one is a budget meeting, with the full council. So, as you guys are aware by now, what I like to do is have a joint meeting with city staff, department heads, and the full mayor and council to kind of talk priorities, budgets, where we at. That way, when we get into the budget season, we're on the same page with staff and council, and you guys are putting input into it, and staff that has a chance to chat back with you. So, that typically is at like twelve o'clock. We've done it last week in June, we did it the twenty-third through twenty-seventh, we could do it the sixteenth through the twentieth. I'd look for a date, kind of from twelve to twelve o'clock to four o'clock, as we've done in the past. Something for a budget priority hearing, we would call that.
If we deal with both, both issues.
Well, I think we should do a separate project one, because that one, that, that's one that I would like to do before I transition out of here, because there's so many things going on. And I'd like to have you guys all there, and then some staff as well, just chat about all the projects, where they're at, where they're going. I will have a write-out for that, which I've been working on. So that one, I would suggest doing a different, different dates. If we could just set one of them first, the budget priority hearing would be first.
And you're saying that we would run for several hours, usually starting at noon?
We start at noon, and, yeah, we just started at noon, and it usually is done by three, maybe thirty, somewhere, depending on how long our department heads.
Well, I think Lindsay and I are going to be at the Lake of Minnesota Cities Conference from the twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh, so.
We could look at June thirtieth or twenty-fifth of June.
Twenty-fourth, possibility.
Yes, twenty-fourth is a possibility, yeah.
Pardon me? Twenty-fourth, pardon me, aren't you? Yeah, why don't we do that, and we'll give Lindsay and I some added ammunition as we go into the breakout sessions at the conference there. All right, so let's target noon on?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth. It's budget.
It's budget, budget. I do think the project meeting and the budget meeting.
Do they buy a motion there?
Uh, motion, okay. Is there a motion to schedule a budget planning meeting for twenty-fourth?
Budget planning meeting on June twenty-fourth, from twenty-fourth.
Moved by Councilor Berquist, support.
I'll support it.
Supported by Councilor McClosage. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve. That motion carries, and does that deal with?
That's one, and then the next one would be a project meeting, and maybe we'd do that the following week, but we have the first. And the first would be a council meeting, already scheduled, second. I don't want anything later than that. We could also do it the week of the sixteenth, seventeenth, something along those.
What was the meeting on Tuesday, all those, I think they go projects, the one that's coming? Yeah, the tenth.
No, that's. That's related to the city administrator position.
Right.
We could do it before that, if you wanted to. I mean, I'd have it ready to go by the tenth.
Well, no, I, I thought we were in conjunction getting a list of other projects, we're, I don't know, didn't we talk about that in the session?
Well, I think, I think the meeting we, the special meeting we had called for next Tuesday is strictly with the city administrator position.
Right.
But as any, we could probably do a session before that.
Well, it's kind of tiny, I, I'm good anytime, I mean, whatever you think is the best timing for it.
I mean, if we're getting together at, at five o'clock, and you guys want an hour or two for projects, and an hour for the administrator position, that would be a three hour, or whatever. Or do you want to start it earlier, do it at three? Go three to five, and then five o'clock to?
That would work, yeah. Talking on the tenth or the seventeenth?
The tenth at three o'clock.
Tenth at three o'clock, all right. Is there a motion to schedule that, the meeting at that time?
Well, I think we should make a motion on that.
At three o'clock?
Oh, fair, it's a separate meeting at three.
And that's the project meeting?
Yep.
Have a motion to call the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, we.
Project meeting for the tenth, June tenth.
Three.
Moved by Councilor Hanson, support.
We have to read it?
I support it, sorry.
Supported by?
Council.
Council Berquist, all right, and if there's no further discussion on that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve. All right, so we have that meeting scheduled.
The last thing I have, which we will not have to action on tonight, but we will need, now that we have a fifteen million dollar wastewater treatment plant, Mercury Project on going. I'd like to do the, we usually do the co-sign, the docu-sign process to keep it moving, so typically what we've done in the past is a member of the council is elected to sign those to keep the payouts moving with the administrator. At this point, we, I would ask that, one of you think about becoming that signatory for that position, and then Deputy Clerk Luke would then sign for the city staff. But we could do that at the next council meeting, so we don't have to do that now, but just think about who wants to be the signatory for the wastewater treatment plant, docu-sign process. And if it is me, Deputy Clerk can be up with you all. So then we can keep those moving and then.
It's relatively painless.
Yes, yeah, so that's all I have.
All right, very good. Any other counselors, have any other business?
I just have one thing, I think when the counselor Billy passed away, did we reassign his committees?
Uh, some of them, yes.
There's still a half a year, I don't know if you want to revisit that with the incoming counselor?
It's, it's on our task list to go over with Ashley Torres.
But a good point, we wouldn't want her to sit idly in the room, well.
For six months.
City business. All right, the other business, if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Moved by Councilor Berquist, moved to adjourn, supported by Councilor Hanson. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve. We stand adjourned, and so the, right. Now, the meeting, the budget for the, yeah, the ten, the, the three o'clock meeting will not be an official meeting of the council. Well, I suppose we have a meeting.
We'll be, yeah.
So, we'll have to sort of, we'll start. Well, there's more meetings, I thought.